We'll start by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, on our nation, under God, invincible, without any injustice at all.
It's a matter of practice. All right, so Bob is and Phil are both away, given that it's the last meeting in August, a summer meeting. I was actually saying to Tanya walking in that it seems like it's the first meeting of the year, because everything started, sports started and orientations tomorrow, you know, two days for freshmen, so anyway. Okay, so I'd like a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, motion carries three zero. Since there's just three of us, obviously, if someone doesn't approve it, then it won't pass, because we need a quorum for anything that's approved, and a quorum is three.
In this case, we'd be done.
So I'm going to turn it over to Chris with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. A few brief things, and things that are, I think, very obvious to all of us right now, that we're excited for the opening of school tomorrow, we're thrilled to be welcoming back our teaching staff. Through the use of two superintendents, conference days, we're going to be busy working with our staff to prepare them for our students' arrival on next Tuesday, the third. I have to say, I've had the pleasure of seeing all of our new teachers during a two-day new teacher orientation that we've enjoyed, and having seen a number of our veteran teachers who've been in, whether through curriculum work, working in their classrooms, doing their own lesson planning, and I can really attest to the enthusiasm and commitment that is present. Certainly, we're setting up for a wonderful school year for each and every student. This year, we're also have many areas related to our school's safety that we're working diligently to enhance. First thing that should be obvious to a lot of folks around town, if you happen to be up and down the campus hill at all in the last couple of weeks, or in and around Dow's Lane, you'll see the Safe Routes to School grant is active in Irvington. After many years and many delays, it's becoming a reality. We have many new or replaced sidewalks in and around Dow's Lane, up here at the campus as well. Sidewalks are supposed to be all completed by Friday, and in the very near future, we'll be getting new lighting up the campus hill, which certainly will be a welcome addition. In our schools, we are eager to welcome a new full-time greeters in each of our schools. We've updated all of our emergency plans. We'll continue to use video surveillance where it exists in and around our schools. And we've also are looking to some other security enhancements. In the very, very near future, we're going to have a buzzer installed at Dow's Lane. We're just waiting for the vendor to be able to complete the work, which will make, I'm sorry, I said Dow's Lane at Main Street School, which will make that much more secure. We're also going to have more diligent sign-in protocols in all of our schools. We'll ask visitors to identify where they're going, sign in, they'll be wearing guest badges that expire after 24 hours, that comes up void on the badge, so we know that someone's not recycling passes and coming back to visit multiple times. So we're certainly proud of those efforts, and look forward to continuing to make our schools as safe as we possibly can for our students. We've really enjoyed a great relationship with the village and the police department over the years. This year, the police department is going to extend some of their patrols to more closely monitor our campus grounds, recognizing there's a lot of folks passing through the area. Police will be enforcing all traffic regulations in and around the campus, so we certainly encourage everyone to drive carefully, obey the posted speed limits, and monitor the traffic signs, and make sure you're not parking in a fire zone. But there's been many concerns over the years, and the police department has responded and is looking to work with us to make sure it's safer for all of our pedestrians in and around the campus. As we shared going back at the end of the school year into the summer, we're excited to be able to welcome a number of enhancements to our food service program. This year, our students will receive all fresh fruits and vegetables as opposed to canned or frozen product. We're also going to be serving sun butter rather than peanut butter. We, at the, in the campus, the deli had become very popular, but it was always an à la carte option, so it was much more expensive for students. That will be now offered to our students as a regular lunch. We're also adding additional service line here at the campus to expedite service for our students, so they have more time to enjoy their meals rather than spending their lunch periods waiting in line. We're going to have expanded salad bars, they're going to be offering daily fresh yogurt parfaits, and we're here, there's going to be at the campus, a variety of other offerings for our students. We look forward to continuing this initiative. We are still working with Aramark, who was the food service provider last year, but we do have a new food service manager that is very eager to find opportunities to work with the school community and to enhance the program wherever possible. In looking forward, as Mrs. Kerner said, it feels like it's the first meeting of the school year, but with that in mind, we're thinking ahead about possible discussions and presentations that we'll have, and things that we know we're going to tackle in the 13, 14 school year. In the coming month, we're going to hear from our principals, they're going to provide some overviews of the school openings, and discuss some of the focal points of the work that'll occur in their respective schools. We are going to address the space utilization study. We're going to have to revisit the field improvement initiative to not only address the needs of East Field, but to engage in conversation around Mizaro's Field, to determine if we're going to take steps to enhance that facility. We will venture into long-range planning, and of course, we're going to engage in many discussions about the education of our students. This year promises to be an exciting one around the board table. We have a lot of important work to accomplish, but in our classrooms in each of our schools, there's going to be a very, very serious focus on what we need to do to be able to enhance teaching and learning, so we benefit all of our kids. Thank you.
Just two comments on what you said on the food program, and it's more, actually more for the people on the watching the video, but there is a food committee that we've kind of officially established this year, so if anyone in the community has comments or suggestions or complaints, and they send it to, I guess, anyone, Maria is the point person on the food committee from the board, or send it to-
Points to approve it tonight.
Right. Haven't gotten there yet, but just feel free to email the board or the district offices or any of us, and the comments will go to the food committee, and hopefully, they'll be addressed on an ongoing basis. So, and then the other thing is just when we talked about long-range planning, I don't think we talk about on this list, but you know, we also have appointed two board members that are the point persons for the strategic planning group, and that's John and Phil. And so, you know, any questions about the long-term planning or strategic planning, I would say you could direct it to John and Phil. Okay, so, any next on the agenda is any comments from the community member? Any comments, any questions? Anything not on the agenda? Okay, so we're going to move forward then, and next up is the committee and liaison assignments, and I don't think I need to read them, but every year, the board has certain committees that run, they have a couple of new ones they add, such as food. So we've outlined the committees and the assignments for the upcoming year, and anyone who is, do you want me to read them? Okay, you want to? Curriculum is myself and John, and communications is myself and Phil. Finance is John and Bob, Gredos. Buildings and grounds, Maria and Phil. Policy is Bob and Maria. Certain groups or committee of the whole board, it's just audit personnel, negotiations, land and new policy. CAV, Community Advisory Board is Maria. Safety is Maria and Phil. Food services, Maria. IAF is Phil. PTSA is Bob. Quad Village is myself. Special Ed is myself. Southwest Bose's is John. Irvington Village Liaison, Bob. And Westchester Putnam School Board Associations is myself. So, and you know this, but you know, what we try to do is, for the most part, if people have been doing it and have an interest and are comfortable with it, a lot of times, we try to extend their tenure, so there's some continuity. So, it's just funny presenting to an empty room. I got to keep you interested. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Maria now for the policy committee report.
Okay, on July 24th, the policy committee met, who was myself, Dr. Harrison, and Elaine Cardia. I think, Bev, were you there for a few of the policies, and then when it didn't pertain to you, you very quietly stepped away? We reviewed policies upon advice of council, which ones needed to be updated due to changes in the law, and other, which are attached, some of them are up for approval for tonight's board meeting, so they could be ready to roll for the beginning of school year. Others are on tonight's agenda, our first reads. Some of them are new policies, also upon advice of council, that we should have, and I think they're pretty self-explanatory.
So, anyone who's looked at the agenda knows that this agenda is very policy-heavy, and I know that there are quite a few that we're probably going to pull out to discuss. So, I'm wondering how I should do this. Should we go through one by one and see if there's comments, or should I just see which ones we want to pull out?
Well, when you say pull out to discuss, or pull out because you're not going to vote?
I guess, I'm not sure, we'll have to see what happens.
Yeah, so then why don't we discuss-
Why don't we just go down, see what we have a discussion for, and then we'll pull out, and then at the end, we'll vote on what we need. So we're just going to go down one by one, and if we're okay with it, we'll pass, and we'll do a consent vote at the end, and anything that we're not going to vote on, we won't include in the consent. I'll do the consent at the end, because I don't know what to include in the consent agenda. I don't know what we're ultimately going to end up approving, and what we're going to end up tabling to a later meeting, so.
Can I just-
Yeah, sure.
One important issue, I have these cookies here that I wonder if- Get them off my, they're going to be sitting here all night if I don't pass them.
Why don't you pass them?
Take one, and they're from Meg Benedetto, who's her new superintendent.
Oh, and she's a baker like rain.
She's a cake decorator.
I don't bake like that, that's good.
Those are pretty.
Oh, yeah. My food tastes good, it doesn't look that good.
But you know what, actually, that's, I was going to say a few words, just kind of along the lines of, it's feeling like the first meeting, it almost feels like it's a new start, because senior administration is kind of now their second year, you guys are kind of up and running, and first year's growing pains are past, and so you're kind of right in the midst of it right now, and then we have a lot of new additions to the administrative team. So between, we have, you know, Meg, who's the Dow's Lane AP, David Cohn, who's the principal of the high school, we have the new guidance chair, Michael, I'm forgetting, we have Deb moved up full-time as the high school AP. So, yes, there's a lot of changes this year, it's kind of exciting, it seems like, you know, we're in a really great place to do a lot of great things, so.
And I have to say, there's a real positive spirit, it's been exciting to see how the administrative team has really bonded and gelled, and eager to challenge one another's thinking, but at the same time, ready to have a laugh with one another. It's really a group that I think we're going to accomplish a lot of wonderful things.
Okay, so back to the consent agenda. I'm kind of going to skip through the minutes, does anyone want to pull out any of the minutes?
I actually do.
Okay.
It's for comment.
Okay, so, why don't you start with your first, which one?
Okay. The, well, eight, two, and eight, three, they're the minutes for, let me just make sure I've got my notes right. Yeah, eight, two, and eight, three.
Okay.
So let me just, I'm happy to, so I just thought we would just, as we're going, we'll do whatever comments and discussion is necessary.
No, no, so why don't we start with eight, two?
Okay, okay. So, my question on eight, two, and it might be helpful to have Gus's input on this, is that this was, these were the minutes for a special meeting, we had, I think, maybe three special meetings over the summer, and this was one that was almost entirely an executive session, yet the minutes don't really provide any information as to what that executive session was about. And I just posed the question to the superintendent, and I think it's maybe worth asking the question as to what, what we can say. It says, you know, to discuss the employment history of particular persons, which doesn't really describe what the executive session was about. So my question is, you know, is, can we use more descriptive language, at least among the, you know, menu of things that are there to describe what an executive session could be without betraying the specifics?
Yes, please. The fact of the matter is, in terms of executive session, the school district and the board of education is obligated to indicate the reasons for going into executive session. The board wants to be more descriptive if you can, to go into the executive session. Goes beyond talking about the employment history of employee, and it still is over the collective bargaining, just to worry about that going into the executive session. That is appropriate for what to describe specifically why we're going in. As for what happened in the executive session, that's not something that you're required to do without, providing any more detail of the reason why you're going into executive session. Nor, solid one other thing, nor required to take any minutes in terms of executive session of what occurs in the executive session.
Would you prefer something more generic, like personnel, and leave it at that?
Well, no.
I think that we, I'm sorry, do you want to be a new leader?
Yeah, but it's, well, here's, I don't know if you should be using a mic, by the way, I mean, we're going to, it won't be audible on the tape. The boilerplate says medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person, persons, or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, blah, 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 of a particular, particular person or corporation. Can we take portions of that language that are more descriptive of what we actually did? Well, okay, so in this instance, I think it was matters leading to the employment of a particular person, is what we actually did, and I mean, it would be more transparent for the community if our admins could say that.
As long as that's the reason that was-
That, that's my memory of what we did, Jen.
I'm fine with that.
But that would be in action moving forward, we can't recap what, what was on the agenda from that time.
That's more subjective than the immediate prospect.
Okay, I thought this was part of the minute, I'm sorry, if that was-
You're saying that to capture that as the reason, in the minutes, the reason for going into executive session is that, so he's saying instead of adopting the minutes, just change the reason for going into executive session, making change to your minutes is essentially what John's asking. Yes, I'm assuming moving forward, this is something you'd like to do, but in terms of section eight point two, the minutes that were written, changing the reason to be a little more descriptive.
But the motion, the motion, the motion that carried to lead that meeting was, that was the particular motion, so.
Oh, oh, with the motion that were, okay, it wasn't a description, it was just the motion.
Okay.
But we change the motion.
Okay.
We should change the motion, but it's not the-
No, I didn't realize it was a motion, okay, yeah.
Okay, okay, it was matter leading to the employment of a particular person. Fine, and maybe it's just something for us to be, I think, a little more careful about going forward, about, just in terms of having a better transparency of that process.
Okay, eight point three, John?
Eight point three was just a comment I want to make, in that if, when we're doing minutes where we have a very large number of consent items, and I actually tried to read these minutes, it's really, you can't really follow what was the consent items and what else happened, because the reality is, you have a whole collection of items, you do one vote, and, and I don't know if there's, I just ask whether there's a way to write the minutes in such a way to group all those items, and say, the following enumerated items were all subject to the same single consent vote. So it's clearer and probably more readable as a minute.
Each item has in parent's consent, so that if somebody's looking at the minutes, they'll see that it was part of the consent. And that's why, if you'll notice, I was breaking out-
Yeah, I know.
I'm breaking out the board business one, board business two, that there might be something in the board business one that is not part of the consent agenda, so we'll be putting that first, and then hopefully, anything that follows will be part of the consent agenda. Now, when we pull things out for a separate vote, I mean, I guess, yeah, they can be put at the bottom, but then the numbering is going to be, so it's a more thing, but each, each item on the minutes will show that it was part of the consent agenda, and each resolution has the consent resolution, as well as the original resolution for the item.
Yes, I guess what I'm getting from this discussion, which I hadn't fully understood before, is that the minutes are really, the agenda is really integral, and that you really need to follow the exact agenda when you're preparing the minutes.
Yes, yes and no, you know, it depends on how you want to view things, and like I said, if you state that it was part of the consent agenda, and by virtue of a consent agenda, it's everything, you know, this is what was taken under one vote in the original motion. If you want to have anything that was not pulled out of the consent agenda and voted separately and thrown at the bottom, we can do that, but somebody looking at the minutes, they might see eight thirteen, and then all of a sudden, it's eight seventeen.
Right.
You know, so it did really, I guess, is stylistic unless there's a legal reason why we shouldn't be doing it.
It's not a legal issue. It's not, it's not a legal issue.
Right, so, you know.
I'm not suggesting, it's more a sort of a query than, you know.
No, we can't get cumbersome.
Yeah, I think, I think some aspects of the way we're doing consent agendas can be-
What I'm doing is also, if items are taken out, the consent agenda changing resolution to show following items were excluded from the consent agenda. So that when somebody's reading that motion, they'll see that item fourteen was taken after consent had been done separately.
That's great, okay, okay.
Yeah, no, but you're right, I mean, it gets cumbersome when there's a lot.
It's not so hard if you pick it up cold, as a, I know, as a community member, and you're trying to follow it, it's not written from that perspective. It's not written for a person to take it up and read a kind of a descriptive of what went on during the meeting, like, and then, it's written more as, here's the agenda, and here's what happened during the meeting, so that's, you know, I mean, I think-
I mean, there are some narratives.
Right, I mean, I think the only other thing I'd say is that last year, and in fact, I was going to do that tonight, as part of the communication committee, Phil and I split duties, and after each board meeting, one of us wrote notes for the meeting, and we posted them on Facebook or on your, this week, you know, there's a link to those. So that was designed to be kind of a reader's executive summary of what transpired in the meeting. So I don't know if that kind of bridges the gap a little bit for you, but we, I think we're still going to do it this year, I think it was useful, and it's certainly kind of a good, easy, quick read for people who want to know what went on, but don't feel like kind of going through the minutes.
Yeah, you know, presentations will have narrative, but the purpose of minutes is for a historical record of votes and so on, and, you know, that are immortalized, and we have the video, but.
It might be nice just to have, you know, for people who go to the website looking for information, to have a link there saying, you know, link to the Facebook, where it might be on Facebook, or link to where-
A link to the minutes and the summaries.
Yes, people who want to go and find out what happened.
We have that, don't we? We do have that, it might not always be the easiest place to find.
They have two things, they go to board docs, they click on board docs, and as soon as, like, tomorrow morning, as soon as these minutes are approved, they burn directly. So if somebody going into board docs and they hit July 31st meeting, or the reorganization meeting, the minutes will be right there. And the video is right there as well, as soon as-
But will they also be pointed to the more user-friendly Facebook summary?
Not Facebook summary, no.
What I also have under the board of ed tab are the meeting dates, and under there, I might, I would post any presentations, the link to the minutes, the summary, but again, you know, it's an inherent problem with ed line, that, you know, you have to kind of know, and that's why this week is important, because they are late, and then it brings people to-
But you know what we could do, given it's the beginning of the year, we could post something on Facebook, kind of as an overview, okay, here's a link that will always take you to the place on ed line where you're going to find this, this, and this, and we could certainly do a Facebook kind of welcome back, here's a refresher, and include those links in there, so they could always kind of refer back on our page, so.
You know, hopefully, this year will have a site map also, which will direct people, but if you're, you know, it's trying to, and I can put them under news, I mean, you know, whatever you guys want.
My only thought is, obviously, people access information, different people access it different ways.
And you know what people call me when they want to know something? Hey, wait.
But there's a lot of people who don't call you, too.
I either, you know, send them to them as a PDF, or I walk through them through ed lawn.
Do we have a site map on our-
Not yet, that's something that-
That would be really helpful, because then you could reference all these things on a site map.
I think this is-
Or good searching could be.
Certainly recognize if there's interest in making the information more accessible, I think it'd be a good conversation for us to have at the communications committee level, and how we can make this easier for folks to access.
Next up is the Code of Conduct. One thing I'd like to say about the Code of Conduct is it's a big document, clearly, and, you know, also Bob and Phil are in here, and I know that, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to approve it now, because we'd like all of our students to be responsible for having, you know, being able to access the Code of Conduct at the start of school, however, like with any of our policies, we are free to make revisions over the course of the year, we could do it in a month, or two months, or whatever, and then change it on an ongoing basis moving forward. So I just think for today, it's important to get it passed, to get it, kind of, get the new changes in, and get it ready to hand out to the students, but again, certainly when Bob and Phil are back, and we have the whole board, if we have comments, and, you know, I think it's kind of an organic document, I feel like it's always kind of changing.
I think the board always has the liberty to modify these types of things, but when we look at items such as the Code of Conduct, the Shukai Safety Plan, and particular policies, there can, it can lead to operational complications if you're changing things midstream. I just, for a matter of public record, do want to remind the public that we did have a public hearing on July 2nd, so we've had over six weeks for comment on the, on each of them. So I appreciate that it's going to be passed, but I just want to caution that modifications to things such as this midstream could prove to be problematic in implementing discipline within respective schools.
I can get that in mind, absolutely.
And for the record, Bob was supposed to be at the policy meeting, but due to a work commitment, had to, couldn't make it, but he did review these documents and sends in his comments for the meeting.
I mean, just from past experience, my experience with the Code of Conduct has been, and I know this has gotten better over the past two years, but there are often things in the Code of Conduct that just procedurally weren't followed. So at that point, if that comes up during the year, then I think, you know, it was something that I personally would bring up, and say, either we follow it, or we change it to reflect what we're actually doing. So things like that, I've seen in the past, but I know we made a concerted effort to update a lot of that over the past year or two, so hopefully, that won't be a big issue. Do you have any, any comments on the code?
My only comment, I think it probably relates both to the Code of Conduct and the safety plan in terms of the public review that was provided for, it wasn't clear to me that this stuff was, there was any, was, was, if one went to the, this is kind of a communications issue, if somebody went to the website, would they have seen upfront in big, bold letters, here's the Code of Conduct to review, and here's how you submit comments on it?
It was right there in front of us.
Okay. I obviously didn't do it myself, but-
It was on the front page of the district webpage, under news, and that it was, the board would be adopting it today, so that, you know, it was the first read.
And were there, and there were no substantive comments?
No, just a few edits, essentially, one audience member did contribute as well.
And I know I gave some edits, but- And I know I gave some edits, but.
Unfortunately, it's one of those things that I found, no one really pays attention until it becomes an issue for them, and then all of a sudden, it becomes, you know, top of mind.
Wifi's up for anyone.
Oh, it is? Oh, thank goodness. Because I have my comments on here.
All right, so can we move on then on Code of Conduct now? I mean, again, if anyone has comments even throughout the year, they are free to send them to the board, and send them to administration, and, you know, certainly, it gets updated every year, the Code of Conduct, so at some point, it would make sense to do it immediately, or if not, it will be held and updated as they look at all the changes. Safety plan, comments, questions?
Nope.
John?
No, no, not good than what I just said.
The eight point eight, where the APPR plan?
Well, this is really only a comment for the public record, I guess. It's, it's, it would be nice if we could, you know, have a kind of a recap of, if I'm not mistaken, this past year was the first year for the APPR?
Of this.
Process?
In compliance with the new law, yes.
Okay.
Been in place for, we've had an APPR for about eleven, twelve years prior.
But, well, then maybe explain, you can, we can defer the explanation of what's different, other than, but, you know, is it, is it, is it, is what's different, the fact that this now has to have been submitted to the State Department of Education?
It's the accountability measures that are associated with state approval, yes.
Okay, okay. Whereas there's always been an attempt to assess performance, and that sort of thing.
The government, government thought it didn't exist in the past, this great EPR plan, the approval of great EPR plan has led to no state aid increase, which was a case.
Uh, what increase?
State aid increase.
Whatever the increase in state aid is allotted to the school district, except if you do not have a compliant, certified plan filed with the state, they could actually take that one back for the last four years and prospect not providing the state aid if you're entitled to. That's a huge difference from where we were in the past.
Right.
It's kind of alarming, so John's saying, I actually think maybe that would be a good topic for one of the board meetings in the future, is I know parents are always interested in APPR, so not only what the changes were, but, you know, how our teachers fared, how, I mean, everyone was really scared, it was a big, not, not score-wise, but how are they comfortable with the process, are there things that they're looking at changing in the process, and just that, that kind of information, I think the community would appreciate over the course of the year.
Mr. Montgomery suggested, if I may use the word, like a recap, where we can speak to our experience.
Yeah, how did it go, what, what, what went well, what didn't go well, and, you know, and that hopefully will be a chance for other people, us to hear comments on that from other people, and.
Okay.
I might have one other comment on that.
On APPR?
No, I don't, sorry, that's, that's all.
Okay. Eight point nine, John, are you okay with that? You can put a, eight point nine, eight point ten, eight point eleven?
I'm okay.
You're fine?
Yes.
The eight point twelve, that's the policy one. So we're looking at, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven policies, six policies that we're looking. Any comments? I have some comments. John, you have anything on seven three one oh?
Yeah, could I ask a preferatory comment, question?
Yeah.
Which is the question of, am I right to understand this is the first reading for these policies?
Not, not the ones in eight point one two, the ones in eight point one three are the first read, which we will discuss tonight, and hopefully, the second read approved. Normally, a first read, we discuss, and then the second read, we kind of factor in our comments, and we approve it.
So, but, but this says adoption of policies without required two readings.
Right, everything in eight point two, eight point one two.
Eight point one two.
All of these are technically a first read and approval.
Okay, well, that's what you're saying, aren't they? Okay.
And the others are first read, but without intent.
Correct.
Correct.
My, you know, it's, it seems like a nice idea generally, to have two reads, just to give people a chance to be aware of them, if they have any issues, and I'm sensitive, as we've discussed, that there are policies that the administration feels need to be in place before the start of school, so we should identify those and pass them.
And that's what this group represents.
Okay, all of them?
All of them.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe if we go through them, we can understand the rationale for that.
So do you have any, I, I mean, I have some comments on seven one three one, but.
Yeah, I have comments on some of these.
Okay, so why don't I go by, I'll name the policy if anyone has comments, and seven three one oh is student conduct. No?
Just a comment, which I actually have talked separately with Gus, and I just wanna make the point that I think, you know, I'm not gonna succeed on this, but I, I think that there's a, there's a tendency to make these policies read too much like legal language, and not enough like policies that anybody in the district would actually ever read. And, and the repeating of the detailed definition of harassment in three separate policies, which is what we have now, just really seems unnecessary to me, and it's like, not a streamlined sort of thing that you would wanna read, and whereas you could define it once, and then say, as defined in seven three, seven, three one seven, or something like that. And that would make these more readable. Which also raises the question, I don't know, I went on our website and tried to find these policies. I know they're in Board Docs, but are they on the website somewhere, that somebody who's interested in the district policies could actually find them?
Yeah, on Board Docs.
Board Docs.
Board Docs.
And it's, that's non-transparent, I think, to people.
But they can also request copies.
If you're on one page, there is, to the policy manual that's online.
Okay, that wasn't.
It's right there on the page.
I might have been sleep deprived, but I might.
And then through Board Docs, you can also get to the online policy manual.
Which is very user-friendly and searchable.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, I just don't know that people would think to look at.
But when you click the, the link on the page, that's where it takes you.
Okay. I, it's the link on the page that I was having trouble finding.
Okay, what about the docile policy, seven three one seven? Questions? This to me is all acquired legally, I believe, to approve before the start of school. Okay, John? Okay. One five one zero, regular meetings policy? Regular meetings policy?
Thank you.
One five one zero, any comments? You don't?
Wait, reg, um, no comments.
Non-resident redline?
Yes.
You have comments?
You do, I have comments, so go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, I'm pulling it out, so.
Okay. All right. I have two, two, two separate points of comment. One is that the, the revision has removed, well, actually, now that I have a question, two comments and a question. This revision has removed a provision for hearing rights for students in several situations that were in the, the document before the redlining, leaving us without any identified procedure for removing students covered by this, by the, non-resident students covered by this policy. It's, I think it's basically left, if there's any disciplinary issue, they're out, without any sort of procedure behind that, which I have to wonder whether that's something that we ought not have a discussion about. And that makes me wonder, is this something that needs to be in before the start of school, or is this something we can take some more time on?
I think this one we can take more time on. I, this one.
This is not a DAS.
This doesn't need to, we could, we could totally table this and discuss it, and then approve it later.
I was, go ahead.
The issue would be, you do have a student that you want to remove, whatever reason, and then midway through the school year, you had hearing, or a quarter of the way through the school year, you had hearing rights where it didn't exist before, you could have a disparate treatment plan, to the extent that you just had a child removed from school without hearing. So that could present an issue for you guys, to be said, that you change it midway, because it is a due process, substantive due process right, and you'd be granting to individuals that you didn't grant distinctives earlier in the school year. I can comment, just in terms of the rationale, as to why most school districts, and why we advise our school district clients to not provide that right to the board, compared to the parent. And that is, the law views students on attending school on a tuition basis, the relationship is a contractual one, and it's considered to be a privilege for that child to attend school, to the extent that they're non-resident, and they're paying tuition to attend the schools. It's a far different circumstance, when you're talking about a student who lives in the community, has a right to attend, has a statute or a right to attend the school. So that's the rationale for it. There are a number of other issues that could potentially arise, and I could talk to the board about, and I'd refer you to that in the executive session today.
Right, yeah, and, and could we, for example, have some specified procedure that stops short of a formal New York's, formal legal hearing? But, and, and these are not only non-resident students, these are not only tuition-paying students, if I'm not mistaken, these are also students who, for example, have lived in the district for ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, and are, their parents have moved out through their twelfth grade year, and they would also, I think, as this is written, not have those rights, and, and, you know.
Well, also, keep in mind, this is, when we sign a contract for a student to come here, for example, it's a yearly contract, we do not guarantee that if we admit someone, let's say, for kindergarten, that they can be here from kindergarten to twelfth grade.
Year to year.
It's a year to year, because quite frankly, let's say we have a boom in our, you know, population, and we have a whole bunch of more kids coming in, we might not want those tuition-based kids anymore, because it pushes over, whether you need more sections, or whatever, just not financially the right move anymore.
Well, I guess so, yeah.
So it's a year-to-year contract regardless.
Right, but that has nothing to do with the sort of discipline during the.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure.
We can, we have, still have full discretion to say to this person, say, we don't, and I guess we, for whatever reason, can decide, we don't want this particular student to continue, even if the district had room the next year.
Correct.
Right, right.
But, but, but this policy also deals with, deals with, with this idea of tuition-paying students who are kind of permanent residents somewhere else, but it also deals with students who used to be Irvington residents, who are just kind of finishing up a year, or, or next year.
Their senior year.
Or who are about to move in, and are enrolling early.
Future residents, right.
You know, so there's a lot of different things, a lot of moving parts in this, that just kind of.
Right, although the difference from, from the issues that you're discussing, a future residence, clearly, at that point at which they live in Irvington, it then, it's not a contractual relationship, and we can't kick them out for disciplinary matters. And it's interesting, because you bring up the people whose senior year move, that's actually a point I wanna talk about, because I'm fine for the thing in the policy where it talks about if, if people move in May, and they get to finish, or, but the, I, I just, I guess when I read these policies, I, it's never an issue until it's an issue. And I, I would hate to see someone who, like knowingly moves to Tarrytown, or another district, just because, oh, well, my kid could still go to school there anyway. I mean, it seems very lenient of us to say the entire, and again, and know there are extenuating circumstances, and that's why we did the policy, so I wanna give us the flexibility, but on the same point, what I don't wanna see is, you know, thirty people decide to move to Ardsley, their senior year, and continue to send their kids here.
But they can't. This is if you, if you are here for ninth, tenth, and eleventh.
Yes.
So you can't move in your senior year, and then you're vassed.
No, I'm saying, if they're here for ninth, tenth, and eleventh, say, five, fifty people would decide, for whatever reason, we've had it, we're annoyed the budget passed, and we're leaving, fifty people could move to Ardsley and continue to send their, like, to me, it's a little open in terms of abuse, and I'm not saying anyone's done it, but I view contracts as, again, we don't need a contract until someone tries to, you know, get around it. It, the way it's written, it makes me nervous, that it's, it doesn't really make sense for the district, it seems like we might be able to tighten that up. And again, extenuating circumstances are why it's there, it's not there for people to take advantage, but I'm nervous when I read it, about the ability of people to take advantage of that. You know, if you're gonna move in May, or April, I get it, but if you're gonna move in September, or, you know, July, and, because you know your kid can go for free, it's, I don't know, it strikes me as very lenient, so, it's just to discuss.
Yeah, you could, you could, for your, if you could have, say, three kids, and you're saying, well, taxes in this district are really high, but I love the education. When the oldest kid, when the youngest kid gets to start senior year, you could say, okay, now we can move, we don't have to pay taxes for that last year.
A lot of people could do that.
Because a lot of people probably move the year, the next year.
I wanna, I wanna caution the board, because we, I believe we could sit back, and we could go through, and speculate, and come up with a variety of scenarios for every single one of the hundreds of policies that we have. And I, I think our responsibility, your responsibility here, is, is to revise and adopt the policies with the recommendation of administration and council, that serves our needs in leading and managing the district well. If in this case, there is language, and you would like us to revisit this, we can work with council to, to develop some of those protocols that you're referencing, but with the caution, the concern, that if we change something midstream, we do open ourselves to some potential liability, if there were situations where, as Gus indicated, may coin disparate treatment.
Well, if we change anything midstream, my feeling is we would grandfather, and those who started for the year, we would start at the beginning of the school year, or I don't think it's a big problem.
And Gus, and I'm a disparate, sorry, go ahead.
But you do realize that this policy says may apply, there's no guarantee, it needs permission from the superintendent.
Well, I mean, look, I feel like the board's job is to talk about policy, and if we, as a board, I mean, we're having a discussion, and I don't, I think it's up to the board to decide how they would like to approach this, I just, since there's only three of us here, I'm wondering if we should table this discussion until the whole boards here, and then kind of have a bigger discussion, and then come up with a plan moving forward, because, you know, it, again, it's nothing, the other, and just one other thing that I had to bring up, is I, I find it odd that there's a line in there that said, we limit ourselves to ten students per grade, it's just very arbitrary to me. If we have the right to approve or disapprove people coming in, why do we need to set a limit? We could set our own limits each year for whatever we want, it just seems very arbitrary. But I guess my recommendation on this would be that we should table it, and bring it up again at the next board meeting, when the board is here, and discusses the board, and come up with a plan for moving forward, because if the majority of the board feels like it's fine, then, you know, or if the majority of the board feels like we should tweak it, we can tweak it moving forward, grandfathering in this year. I mean, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so what would be your suggestions, then, in terms of, what would you like to see tweaked, what kind of language would you like to see inserted? I'm just curious where you're.
I would probably wanna add a date, as to the point at which you have to move senior year, and it's not, you know.
It does have.
Yeah, I, I, what? No, not, no, but not made for, I mean, for seniors.
For seniors.
You know, I would say maybe if you have a senior, and you move in January, or February, something like that, I can live with, moving before the school year starts, I, seems odd to me. Again, just my feeling, and I would also take out the ten per grade limit, I don't, given that it's an at-will for the board to say yes or no to anybody, I don't understand why we would ever put a limit on ourselves, one way or another, in a policy. But people could disagree, so.
Yeah, and the other thing I would, the other comment that I, I would make, is that the, the policy, the edits to the policy, if you look at the first sentence, the phrase "on, on a non-tuition basis" was struck from that first sentence, and.
Wait, which, which, I'm sorry?
The first sentence, right.
Very first sentence of the policy.
It is the policy that both of us, oh, oh, I see, okay.
It's been, it's got, it's strikeout. And then it's kind of clear in con, and I think it's more or less clear in context most of the time, whether, whether you're dealing with, that, that the first few categories of, of individuals are. most of the time whether, whether you're dealing with it, that, that the first few categories of, of individuals are, are tuition, do not, are not expected to pay tuition. But then you have the group that's starting with students that, that's, we're under the heading "student not living with parent or legal guardian." And I think that, I had the impression, just to make sure. Are these meant to be, I had the impression from the way the document was constructed earlier that these were, these were also meant to be non-tuition-paying students. Because they were all, they were, it's above the heading where it says "admission of non-resident students on a tuition basis."
Which subheading, which group are you talking about now?
I'm talking about the group that's under "student not living with parent or legal guardian." Which initially this document had, it is the policy of the Board of Ed-, I'm going back to the top, the Board of Education that the dis- that the district will not permit any non, will not accept any non-resident student to enroll in the district schools on a non-tuition basis, except in the following circumstances. And then these categories were part of the exceptions to enrolling on a non-tuition basis. We've lost that non-tuition basis language from this, so it's not clear that the items A and C under "student not living with a parent or legal guardian" is on a non-tuition basis anymore. I think that's just, that's a drafting issue that I want to clarify. And that, that leads to the issue of exchange students and whether exchange students would normally be expected to be on a non-tuition basis. The policy as previously drafted implied that they were.
That they're non-tuition.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
And that may or may not be accurate, but I don't even know if we have exchange students, but-
Well, I think it is non-tuition and if, and that's again-
Yeah, we need to draft it more clearly than, yeah. I think it's just a question of as it was changed, some, the drafting, I think, injected an uncertainty that had not been there before.
Okay.
So, may I ask, what, what is the, the direction here with this? I'm unclear.
Well, were the, if these are meant to be non-tuition-paying categories of students-
No, I understand, I understand the question and I think at the end I'm going to ask for any policies, if there's comment on, if you could help summarize what those are and get them to us as soon as possible. Recognizing that our next board meeting is two weeks away with the holidays in between, that, that, so to make sure we're able to capture everything that you're, that you're questioning or would, would like modified. But with respect to this particular policy, is this something that you're suggesting that, that you're, are you saying that you want to table this?
Yeah, I mean, I think John wants to clarify the, in "students not living with their parents" and in "exchange students," John wants to clarify the language that it's clear that you're talking about non-tuition students.
It actually depends upon the type of visa.
Right, the visa, the two different visas, that's why.
Right, but I mean, I think the language just needs to be clarified.
Right.
Right. And I, again, though I would like to talk to the other board members, I would like to talk about perhaps inserting a date into the people who move senior year, that it's not just moved, and I would also like to take out the ten grade, ten per grade limit. I just don't see the point of it, but.
Okay, um, out of curiosity, maybe this is more of a question for Gus. Traditionally, what do other schools do in terms of senior year? Do they put a month in there or is it just case-by-case basis?
I, I think you have a case by-
Case basis.
Give yourself some discretion. I would tell you it's a practical matter.
I'm fine with case by case.
Let's assume it's March, let's assume it's April. Then let's assume you do remove the student based upon that and you go to the commissioner, whatever is going to be a testing decision. The likelihood is, and then a, a person appealing to the commissioner and ask for a stay in all the residency cases we get, a request for a stay to be, usually that late in the school year, the commissioner's will have to set that the kid will stay until they're ready for a decision. So it's a practical matter. When you get to that point in the school year, particularly for a senior, the likelihood is the commissioner's going to say, stay approved. By the time you get your decision, the kid will hopefully have graduated unless, you know, left back in that unfortunate circumstance. But that's the practical reality of what you're dealing with. I would tell you, to the extent that you have discretion to make the policy general and not add that specific. Because the issue becomes if you do have a situation where the delay is not appropriate, technically the board would have to suspend this policy. And say, you know what, in this case, which you have the right to do. In this case, we're not going to follow it. That again goes back to what I said earlier, which is individuals saying, well, why do you do it for this kid and not for, you know, Johnny until next year? So, you know, that's typically the issue and there are practical considerations when you're talking about residency.
But, I mean, so even to take what we have now and to say that the board can, the board has the discussion to approve students who move in their senior year on a case-by-case basis, I, I'm fine with that. But again, it's what you said, then you bring up, well, someone took out a last year, what about me? But I, I mean, I'm fine saying on a case-by-case basis. Again, I just don't want to see abuse of the policy. And written the way it is currently, it, it just looks like it's some crazy thing could happen and we might end up in a bad situation at some point.
I thought by this all the point when it comes to your policies, having a policy usually or typically, in addition to advising the publicist of what's going on, it also gives legions. Another thing to criticize the board about in terms of saying, in addition to violating the law, in addition to violating practice or violating the policy. So to the extent that you don't need to be specific in certain instances, I advocate not to do that. Where you have a statute order requirement-
Yeah.
Where you have to follow the statute, follow the statutes, but there's the confusion in terms of whether or not you violate the policy or not. So that's the general advice we give to our clients when it comes to that.
Okay, and you think this language doesn't say case by case?
I, to me, when I read it, it sounded like anyone who moves is automatically going to be able to let their kids do it.
But it says they must apply to the superintendent.
It's hard to me to see that on this thing.
Right here.
May apply, may apply in writing to the superintendent of schools or-
For permission. They have to ask for permission.
Again, I don't know, that language makes, asking for permission is very different than the board has a right to decide on a case-by-case basis.
But it's not the board, it's the superintendent.
Um, the superintendent, I meant superintendent, yeah, yeah. It just, it just one, this to me, and again, it's just how I interpret it. The connotation of the, this is that you will get accepted unless there's an extenuating circumstance. If you say the superintendent will make a decision on a case-by-case basis, then the connotation is the superintendent's going to read and make a decision on. I, I read him, and it might just be me, I read him differently. I feel, I, this to me, if, if I moved and you told my kid no with that language, I would feel like I have a legal case to say, you pretty much say everyone's allowed to do it. You're like, you pretty much say, just write the letter and they're going to get permission. I don't know if it would win, but it just, that's how it reads. And again, I just view contracts from the perspective of, let's try to put the posi-, put the school in a more powerful position moving forward so we avoid issues, so. But happy to talk to the whole board and however anyone else feels, it's not, it's not a huge issue to me.
Would it be helpful if I sent this as not a red line, so that you're looking at, I'll save it as a separate document?
Yeah, so you read it as is instead of like this.
Maybe, yeah.
Or, or would it be, where would it, would it be feasible to, would it be feasible to send it even in this form as a Word document, that you can turn the red line on and off then? And we could also, if we think there's, if we want to suggest changes, we can enter them in and people can look at them that way.
I, I would prefer not. I, I think, yeah, to be able to track them would be difficult for, for us and looking at people working from multiple documents. I suggest we send copy of them back, you send us our feedback, and then we will try to integrate the, the recommendations as appropriate and of course with the review of council.
Okay, I'm going to move forward to the next, which is non-resident tuition agreement. Are we kind on that?
Yes.
And anti-bullying revised, are we okay on?
Wait, which number is that?
Seven, three, one, four. Yep, we found on those. Seven, three, one, zero, student conduct and discipline. We talked about, we talked about that already. It's in both, and that one's in both, that one's in both, that's in the, okay. I think that's, now we move on to eight point one, three, which is naming facilities. I had one minor comment on that. Sorry, I could have gotten this sooner. In the, on the naming facilities, on Roman numeral three, section three, where it says, "upon recommendations by buildings and grounds, the board shall approve." I think it shall vote to approve. Doesn't board vote on that? I don't think it's shall approve. I think it should say shall vote to approve. That was my only comment on that.
And Robin, by comment at this stage, since we're not approving these, these are-
That's a first read.
Really requested changes to the document for its next read.
Yep, okay, okay. Anything on the student expression, non-school-sponsored regulation?
This is also a first read.
First read, yes.
Yeah, I have a, a lot of discomfort with this particular policy. I think we should tread very, very carefully before we, we adopt this. You know, it gets into, we're, we're talking about what the limits are of student speech. And I, I, I want to hear very clearly, maybe, and I think this is a discussion we should have with the full board and not tonight, about why we should be limiting speech exactly, under what circumstances, and also under what circumstances the law, and this goes up to Supreme Court decisions, says we can. And they're, you know, I've read the, forgotten what the formal name for long hits for Jesus is, but it's the Alaska one. But I've read that, parts of that decision. And the Supreme Court seems to be pretty restrict, restrictive and careful about the circumstances under which, which it feels it's legitimate for a school to limit student speech. And we're talking high school primarily, I think.
High school also.
Well, this is, this applies to all of them, but I think it's a particularly difficult issue for high schools. And, and that, that particular Supreme Court decision dealt with the advocacy of, of drug use. And that, it said, well, that's probably a legitimate thing for schools to, to be dealing with. But, you know, we have to be careful about how far we extend that.
I, I think that we should table this for when the entire board is back. I think it's a bigger discussion.
I, I think it's a, potentially a big, very big discussion.
Well, there's nothing to table. You could have your, you could have your comments now and then Phil and Bob could have their comments in two weeks.
Well, I think it should be a discussion with the whole board to figure out what the direction is that we move forward. Not that I would ta-, I would table it in that, I don't, I, I just feel like the three of us to have a discussion, it's, we would need to have it again with the whole board. Just because I would like the whole, I would like the whole board to weigh in on this. So it just seems that I don't think we need to have a discussion twice. I think we should-
So in some sense, we're not even considering this the first read then? Because there's, there's no decision-
That's why I would like to table it into a, I would like to put it on the agenda again for another first read.
Say you bring it on for a second read and if, and if we don't come to terms with it, then you table it. We've initiated the process, so we get to the next reading and if, if there isn't resolution or if there's additional recommendations, then we bring it back again at that point in time. But I, I'd suggest that you, you don't move the table because there's no action that's being taken tonight. So we bring it back again and then if the board's not prepared to adopt it following discussion, then you would table it.
Say, just do a third read?
Is that what we would do?
Yes, this is valid.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way if you don't have any comments or there, you can adopt the policy in a third session. If you do that, if you decide that you want to continue your discussion, indicate that you want to do another read or table it at that, at that point, by avoiding resistance.
Okay.
So say, we'll make the assumption that the, the same holds true for seventy-three, sixty?
Which is, um-
School-sponsored?
Well, I don't, I don't really have a problem. I don't, I, when I read this, I didn't have a problem with that one. It's, it's really different.
Is that school publication?
It's much narrower, right, than.
Okay.
So, well, I think same thing, in a second read.
That's my view, but we obviously need to have a separate discussion of it anyway.
Right. Okay. And then we have, um-
Whistleblower?
The whistleblowing, right.
I do have comment. My, my concern is only that I think the policy as written really in most instances required that the whistleblower go to either the superintendent or somebody, and everybody else who works in the schools is effectively the subordinate of the superintendent or to a subordinate of the superintendent. And if you have somebody who wishes to blow a whistle hypothetically on something that's going on without any superintendent or one of, you know, somebody in his or her office, there is no easy channel for, in this policy, for that whistleblowing to be done. And, you know, or it just says to the board as a whole, but it may be difficult for somebody to go to a board meeting and say, I hereby, I, I've seen, you know, so-and-so's hand in the cookie jar, whatever. So, you know, maybe we just ought to think about ways to write this to provide other avenues for whistleblowing to be done. Maybe to, people to go to individual board members or-
Person could also go to the State Department.
The State Department of Education, maybe? Yeah, but that may be something that people, people may not, well, suppose somebody does go to an individual board member. We ought to have protections in place for that.
I'm sorry, what was the second part of it?
Suppose people do want to blow the whistle by going to an individual board member. I think our policy should be written so as to protect that person.
Yeah, I agree.
But I think the policy does.
This is a clarify question, but John, you're not, are you suggesting that the Board Member Act, the Board Act as investigators or just the, they're going to receive the report and then refer to the appropriate investigation?
The latter. They, they would, the board member would go to, would take that and, and not do it his or herself presumably, but would be the, the channel through which it would go to the appropriate, but-
Yeah, I, I, I actually think it's a really good point. I mean, I just know sometimes it's, um, it's hard for someone to go to someone in the district. It might be easier for them to go to a board member. I mean, if the purpose of the policy is to whistleblow, you know, to, to bring up some wrongs that's being done, I certainly feel like whatever is easiest for somebody else to do. And plus, some people would do it anyway, even if it's not in the policy. But you're right, so why isn't the policy written to improve that?
Yeah, and in the nature of these policies, and they, they exist in a lot of places now, is to provide protection, I believe, for the whistleblowers. So, you know, to promote better ethics in government.
Is this as much as identifying a statement indicating that someone may report this to an officer of the board or trustee of the board as well? Is it just adding a statement, do you think, John?
Probably. I haven't thought that got through the exact wording, but it's probab-, that's probably what it would-
So could I ask that, that you take a look at this and, and maybe give a suggestion where you would see that fit? Because, yeah.
Yes. Uh, sure, I, I'll follow up with you separately on that thing, please. If-
Okay, so then moving forward, any other comments on, um, you, you have more, on, um, the consent agenda, anything on nine point one? Ten point one? Point two? Hold on, I'm going to be very slow. Um-
Oh, okay, ten point two?
Ten point three, four, five.
Why don't we say anything in ten?
Six, seven, eight. It's a long consent agenda. Do you have anything else, no?
Uh, I'm waiting till you get to nineteen.
Okay, oh, nineteen? Okay, do you have anything before nineteen, area? I'm fine.
No, no, I don't.
Okay, so we are going to skip? Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, ten, nineteen, it's a-
Oh, ten, nineteen, okay.
Not nineteen-
I was like nineteen, ten, nineteen, a school of extra compensation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this is, I would just like a, more information about what this is because I don't feel I know. It's a sixth period normally, so maybe somebody could explain. My assumption is, I don't, I don't know what, what school this is, what this person teaches. what this person teaches, anything, so I'd just like to know. I also know that I need a quick.
Sixth period class happens in a couple of different ways. So in some cases, we pay teachers for a sixth period class because we need one more section of something. So we don't need to hire a teacher. We don't, we're not going to hire a point two teacher. Instead, we pay a teacher to do a sixth period class. All teachers teach five. So sometimes when you see something like that, it's because we've then, do you want me to keep passing these?
No eating.
Here, but, yeah. So, so sometimes it's because we've added a sixth period class. The other time that we can actually be, it's called a sixth period class, is for our English and Social Studies teachers. They have contractual limitations to how many students they can actually have assigned to them in a given year. And that number's a hundred and eight.
Oh, okay.
So if our numbers go beyond a hundred and eight, we technically have to pay them for that. Ideally, which is where we are right now, we actually can give them another section, which opens up options for other students. And it's not about going over the hundred and eight, it actually creates opportunity. So Larry Fata is actually teaching an additional class above his five sections.
Okay, and what does Larry Fata teach?
I'm sorry, High School Social Studies.
High School Social Studies, okay. He's teaching an additional class?
Yes.
Because, is this particular, is it a particular grade level that had too many students?
It's, it's a combination of reasons that can happen when you get into the higher level. And we have teach kids who take electives, so it's not so even. So for instance, if I'm at the middle school and you have an, you have a hundred and fifty students, you're dispersing those hundred and fifty students into all different sections. It's pretty clean. But at the high school where kids take electives, that's not always the case. So you could have a teacher with sixteen kids, where another class could have twenty-four kids. So the total number leading to a hundred and eight can come from a variety of different classes and sections. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I can see how this wouldn't really be known until kids' school schedules are put together.
Yes. And also, as new students enter, there's a lot of variables that can change that for us.
Thank you.
Ten point two, ten point twenty through twenty-two?
Nope.
Eleven point one through eleven point four?
Three.
Yes.
I'd just like to understand better, but the budget transfer, the second of these two budget transfers has to do with allocating money to pay the building's security services that we're hiring for the four buildings. And most of that money is coming from budget items that were, which were basically budgeting, you were budgeting personnel before. But then there's a balance. Those don't quite add up. And the balance is being taken from plant fuel. Which implies that we're normally budgeting in excess there, so I just want to understand why we're normally budgeting in excess in, in plant fuel?
We have to budget for fuel. We have a dual heating system. And we get a lower rate from the utility by allowing that switch over. So we budget a little bit extra in fuel and a little bit extra in gas for two reasons. One, we don't know which one we're going to use, but also, two, is the fluctuation in rates. So we always have to have a little cushion because you never know exactly how much the rates are going to go up, or if you're going to have a really bad winter as far as cold. So some years, you use all of the money, some years you don't, but you have to account for that. You can't budget right down to the penny.
But, but, but how can you be making a judgment in August about fuel use?
Using that code for now, if something should happen in, in the year where that code runs a little bit short, then I would have to replenish it from some other code.
Okay, so.
Because it's so new in the year, I don't have a crystal ball as to know exactly where I'm going to wind up in June. But this was my best guess at the present moment.
Okay, so it's the best bet for now?
Yes.
Where, where money is going to be available? Okay.
Eleven point four?
No, I don't.
Okay, eleven point five? No?
No?
Eleven point six, seven?
No.
Eleven point eight?
Yes. Do you want, do you have questions, or I don't want to?
Go ahead.
Speak out of turn.
Could Beverly just give a brief summary as to what this very complex resolution means? And to add context maybe for the questions?
It's, the agenda item is to allow the district to put out to bid a refunding of a serial bond that was initially put out in two thousand and four. And the current interest rates are anywhere from three point seven five to four and a quarter percent on the unmatured dates. By refunding, as you know, the interest rates have gone down. So even paying the closing cost of refunding, we will be saving money. It's, it's like refinancing your mortgage, your home mortgage. That's the same concept with this. Our financial advisors estimate that the district, over the period of maturity, which is still two thousand and twenty-one for this serial bond, we could save approximately seven hundred thousand dollars.
Find about ten more, though?
Well, it's a, it's a large sum of money, nine point five million dollars over that number of years with interest rates.
So that, that's what the, the concept is, and so what is the, the resolution granting authority to?
It's granting authority for our financial advisors to go out on the market, put this out to find the lowest refinancing price. They may already have some bidders that they know of that would be interested in this. They may put it out to bid, depends on the market.
What's your question?
Okay.
I see it.
We have a few questions. The scenario that we got back in July, I think, I guess the financial advisor put together was based, if I'm not mistaken, on rates as of, this, it wasn't very easy to understand that scenario because the pages weren't really very well explained.
Is that for the, the bond anticipation note, or the tax anticipation note?
I think it was a preliminary scenario for the bond ref, this particular bond refinancing.
Okay.
It was a sixteen, roughly sixteen pages of tables, financial tables that we had in July. That's the ba, that document is the basis for the seven hundred thousand dollars savings. Right, okay. That's, I believe, based on May first interest rates?
They based it on May fir, yes, May first, and they were estimating at that time that they could refinance it from one point one percent up to two point four percent, depending on the year. It's a gradual increase.
Yeah, I mean, I think, based on my quick look at rates since then, I think we've, rates have gone up on the order of a percentage point since then. So due to two things. First of all, the, the big tightening in the bond market generally, and then also pressures in the muni market largely due to Detroit. And so we should not be counting on anything like a seven hundred thousand dollar savings anymore. And I think we ought to, you know, it, it's fine to go out and get quotes, but I think we shouldn't agree to do this until we find out what our savings are likely to be. They're not going to be seven hundred thousand anymore.
No, but there, even if you're saving, right now, it's from three and three-quarter to four and a quarter that we're paying on this. So even if we saved half of that, which is three hundred and fifty thousand, that would still be a good savings.
If we save half, I would agree. But I, I think we, you know, we ought to run the numbers, I think.
But I think that, that's the purpose of this. This is, allows bond counsel to be able, and our advisors, to be able to market these, these bonds for refi. And in doing so, we'll come back with what the best available rates are for us. And at that point in time, we have to make the determination then to authorize whether we move forward with.
So this, this long resolution is not giving you authorization to pull the trigger essentially? It has to come back to the board for board approval?
It authorizes the execution.
Just one second, please.
This is what rates have done over this period there. Not, not exactly the same, apples to apples, but something.
No, this authorizes, the, also authorizes that once you have the closing, the presidents of the Board of Education and the designees are hereby further authorized and directed to take any and all the actions necessary to accomplish said refunding.
So I guess what John is saying, which makes sense, is, you know, we're happy to move quickly, but, you know, we'd like to see the savings before the board gives the approval to move.
Well, I'd have to have this table then, because I, from legal, I can't.
Can we revise the resolution here, or can we approve a different resolution?
Well, I don't, I don't necessar, so I don't necessarily have a problem with approving the resolution if we make sure that we're not going to go for, nobody's going to go forward unless they're sure we're going to get some decent savings out of this. And that's not, and I haven't seen any support for that.
So we can talk to Bob about the fact that we'd like him to talk to, hold the board and just make sure the savings is significant before he signs off on it. Will that work?
I don't know if that's feasible, but that would work.
Informal.
I, I would think. Actually, we can do that.
We just like to know what the savings is before, you know, Bob signs off on it.
I, I would suggest what we would do is that, once the numbers come back, Beverly will send out notice to the board. And if there, if administration and the board president is concerned about the potential savings, that we could then call an emergency meeting of the board to discuss the matter.
Is there a need, well, why is there a need for such haste, I guess is my question.
Because interest rates keep going up, and because every, every day, right now, on this nine point five million, we're paying that three and three-quarter to four and a quarter percent. So every day, you're, like your mortgage, you're paying that higher rate.
Right, I'm painfully familiar with my mortgage. The, the new bond is, will not, this is, this is a callable bond, and this is the, and it became callable recently, is why we're moving now?
Yes, August fifteenth.
Okay, so this is, this is literally the first board meeting after it became callable. Will it remain, will they remain callable for the rest of their lives?
It will remain callable till two thousand and twenty-one.
For those that remain, the last of them.
You just keep paying the interest rates.
And the new bonds will not be callable, right?
They could be callable.
They could be, or they will be? Is that a subject?
It's part of, it's part of the issue. It's usually if they're, they're callable versus not callable, it's a difference in interest rate that they will quote on it.
But what was, do you know what was done for the numbers that were run? Were they callable or not callable?
I don't know. Most, most bonds now are callable. But I, you know, I don't know in specifics. But, you know, from my past experience, most bonds that are issued now are callable bonds.
Just one other, one other comment, and I think it's unfortunate we didn't have this discussion earlier that, you know, I at least have been waiting for some response to my questions and never got it. Would it possibly make sense, I don't understand the nature of the costs involved. We're paying some fees to refinance bonds. I don't understand really, are those basically a per, per-dollar cost, or?
You put them all together and you just lump them?
Yeah.
Because it's for the NYMCA fees, it's for Hawkins and Delphio Legal Counsel, it would be for advertising, it would be for the printing of the bond, FedEx. So it's not broken down that way, but that's what all of those issuance costs are, as well as registering, I believe, with DTC.
Where I was going, where I was going with it is it's, I assume that the savings, the benefit for calling the two thousand and fourteen bond is probably, is probably pretty minimal relative to, because we only have one year left on that one. And I'm just wondering whether.
A what, a what bond?
The bond that, the, this, the bond that matures in two thousand and fourteen, next year.
In two thousand and fourteen?
The one-year bond. There's, there's a bond that has one year of remaining term, right?
That one that matures in twenty, the end of two thousand and fourteen, has three hundred and ten thousand, and that is not callable.
Oh, so we're leaving that one alone? No, but there, in the serial bonds, there's, the way the serial bond works is there are bonds, that's broken up into basically different sub-issues that have maturities. One of them matures in two thousand and fourteen, one in two thousand and fifteen, one in two thousand and sixteen, and so on through twenty twenty-one, right?
Right, well, it.
And, and we could conceivably call just two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty-one if we wanted to.
I don't, they usually call the entire, that serial bond series.
Are we required to do that? Do you know if we're required to do that? Can we recall some and not all? I just don't, that goes to the question of how the costs are derived.
Well, yeah, and the closing costs, you know, are, are, the more that you're refunding, the more the costs of issuance are spread out.
Okay, so they're not a percentage of the refunding amount, they're more or less lump sum?
So many, you know, billable hours, et cetera.
And it doesn't really involve any significant more billable hours to write down a different number on the spreadsheet, which is what they would be doing. Okay, that's my question. Yeah, I think we're, my, my only concern then, I mean, the other point to make is that the bond is callable, and, and when you call it, you, you're basically giving up the option of calling it later, so, you know, that's why you want to think about it.
Would you feel more comfortable tabling this until two weeks from now? And I can get them to, you know, run some other numbers for you, or, or table? I don't know.
I'm, I'm happy to, to say go ahead, but, but as long, with the understanding that these numbers on the spreadsheet be rerun with current interest rates.
Well, we'll have actuals.
Right, and we can see whether, we can make sure that we're still saving something. You know, if it ends up being a negligible amount of savings down to, you know, I don't know what that number might be, but, you know, we ought to, I think, be careful.
I actually think it will not be negligible. I think it will be significant because of the current rates that you're paying.
Yeah, but I, but I think, the, the caution I have is that rates have, have gone up a lot in the last, since the beginning of May.
And John, as we said, so we'll have our advisor rerun the interest rates just for illustrative purposes. With the board's authorization, we will proceed. However, if there's anything that is cautioned, administration, board president will notify the board, and if necessary, we can call a special meeting to take different action or to have further conversation.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so skipping through. Anything on eleven point nine, eleven ten, eleven eleven?
Eleven, I have a question on this eleven eleven. Which, you know, I still, and this may get into a legal matter that we need to handle in executive session. I don't understand this one.
I kind of agree with you on this. I kind of agree with you on this. It's a church.
Yeah, and, uh, it's a church, they don't pay taxes to us. I have not understood why the district is entering into this settlement. Um, and, um, and I haven't gotten an explanation that makes sense to me.
Per Ingerman Smith, who handles all of our tax records, we need to approve this because even though the church does not pay school taxes, what they did is they petitioned for a lowering of their assessment. So, even though they pay us no taxes, all of the assessments are still on everyone's rolls, the, the county, the town, the school district. The taxes that they pay are sewer taxes, water taxes and sewer taxes.
Water taxes?
Pardon?
Who do they, just, just for?
Sewer, water, something.
I mean, the Village of Irvington doesn't levy water and sewer charges based on assessed values, so I'm not sure I understand that.
Well, we, I think they're also in Port Perry County.
Is there a sewer district that, there's a, there may be a sewer district that's, uh, we're talking Immaculate Conception.
Can I make a suggestion? You know, Tom Scapulow, who was on this, appreciated the outlook, this is something he's, he's even.
Yeah.
So, if I could make a suggestion to table it, Tom, you come to the next meeting and we explain to the board what the rationale is, if it's in, or going forward, if it's satisfied with that response. Approve it, if not.
Fine.
Yeah, I'm sorry to cut you off, but, yeah.
That is eleven, uh, eleven point eleven. We're going to table it.
That was eleven eleven.
And we'll put it on the next agenda and take it from there, with then more explanation. Okay, um, we're almost there. Eleven eleven, um, eleven twelve or thirteen? Okay, so, what did we take out?
Did we not?
I need a motion to approve, I'm going to go backwards, the consent agenda, taking out, did not keep good notes of this. Um, we are taking, I'm sorry, I forgot I was going to be, we're taking out.
Well, we're, sorry, we're taking out eight twelve, aren't we? But we have a problem there, don't we?
I'm sorry, this is a first read.
The non-resident red line?
So, you've modified?
We're taking out the, we're, we're taking out from the consent agenda, the non-resident red line.
Of eight twelve.
Right, the, um, eight point one, well, that's a first read, so we're not tuning anything with that. And the, um, agenda.
Eleven point eleven.
Eleven eleven.
Eleven, eleven and eleven three. Oh, eleven, the budget transfer, no, we're okay with the budget transfer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And eleven eleven.
Eleven eleven.
Eleven eight, eleven eleven. And that's it. Okay, so may I have a motion? To, to the consent agenda, taking out eleven eleven, um, non-resident policy, and, what are we doing? Are we taking out eleven eight?
No.
Okay, so just eleven eleven and the non-resident policy?
Yeah, would it be maybe clearer if we voted on the, um, eight twelve separately so we can kind of have on record that we're voting on it without that one policy on it?
You can modify, yeah, Elaine can modify the resolution that, that will communicate that those two were, that was pulled out.
That's what I was going to add.
Okay.
Sorry, that didn't make sense.
Okay, so moved.
So, what, what's the motion again?
So, the motion is a consent agenda for everything from eight through and including eleven point thirteen, taking out eleven eleven and taking out non-resident students.
Right, because the other stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I got it, I got it.
Everything else is gross, we said we're going to go second name.
Okay, okay. So moved?
Don't ask for consent yet. Hold table.
Okay, one second.
Gus is, Gus is just reviewing something like that.
One second.
Gus just pointed something out that, um, we may have to, um, table the serial bonds because the way it was written, it says it needs two-thirds of, of vote of the board.
We don't even have.
You don't have enough here.
Yeah, three-fifths is less than.
Okay, so we're tabling eleven point eight also. Can we change the resolution, take out that line, or?
I need to put together, bond counsel puts this together, I'm assuming it needs to be adopted by the board.
Oh, by two-thirds of the board, okay.
But that's a financial law of some sort.
So, we're tabling eleven point eight, eleven point eleven, and the non-resident students. And the consent agenda is everything else. May I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, rezero. Not to the board. Um, okay, um, community comments or questions? Ah, we have.
We have one.
Thank you.
Hi, Michael Hannah from South Buckout. I was just curious if the board has heard from the superintendent whether enrollment has increased, decreased, stayed the same at this point, anticipating the new school year?
It's actually quite interesting. We've seen, um, we finished the school year at eighteen hundred and one students. Um, we know that we had, um, uh, concern about some, maybe some drop-off, but realistically, we're still seeing a number of students enrolling. We still have seven families with enrollment appointments, or six families with enrollment appointments scheduled for the balance of this week. And our, I think our last count, I'm going to say, was seventeen eighty-six, eighty, eighty-six?
Seventy-eight, sorry.
Yeah, like seventeen eighty-six. So, we're currently within fifteen students with six appointments in another week until the first day of school. Uh, so, say we're, you know, enrollment's relatively consistent at this point in time. Um, we have seen roughly seventy new students up to the district enroll, uh, which says a lot about, you know, certainly what's happening in the housing market at this point in time locally.
I guess there is not twelve percent. I'm sure there may be a twelve percent increase in housing rates in the past, like, two months.
But the, the, um, it's, we had a big surge in kindergarten last year, and we're not, we're seeing a, not seeing the same sur, kindergarten is down from last year.
Down from last year, we had a hundred forty-four. Thus far, we have a hundred and twenty-two in kindergarten.
Okay.
It'd be interesting, I bet you have a list, seven families, a bunch of kindergarten. I just, the people who tend to go later are the ones who don't have older kids. If you have an older kid, you probably would have enrolled your kid by now. Be interesting to see if we get like a, a bunch more kindergarten over the next.
And, you know, we, I, we track it, Elaine and I track that on a weekly basis. So, we'll continue to share that information.
Hi, Tanya Hunt, Station Road. I just wanted to, I, I think probably everybody on, on the board and in the administration is aware of this, but just to formally let everybody who might be watching this know, um, the PTSA has a new website, and we also have a new, um, email address. And the website is, um, Irvington School, IrvingtonNYPtsa.org. Um, and so, check it out. We're, we're still in the process of working on it, but it is up and running, and we've got a lot of the information up there already that we want to be sharing with everyone. So, um, take a look. And then also, our new email address is IrvingtonNYPtsa@gmail.com. So, um, we're looking forward to everybody taking a look at those things and using it as a resource. And we're excited about what we've come up with so far.
And will we have, uh, that, there, there's a link hopefully to the PTSA website on the district's website?
Yes, there is.
Okay, do you have a comment? Yeah, okay, so with that, um, any board comments? Anything that's discussed yet? No? Next public meeting is September tenth, Tuesday, September tenth, at seven thirty PM here on the CPR. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, rezero. Thank you.